This is an informal work conference session with the county commissioners and our staff. Appreciate everybody being here. Good to see everybody. The, Donnie, good to see you here. Thank you for coming. The, start here with the agenda, department updates. You want to go ahead and take the first swing at it there? Kimmer?
Yes. Right now, we're trying to finish up our paving for the year. We're up around Price Creek. All we have left is a little patching to do around Price Creek and the White Stone area. So, we're trying to get that done and that'll finish us up pretty much for the year. And we're right at 31 miles of paving, which is a record year for the county. And I'd like to thank all the guys, Road Department, and also Johnny and Phillip, for all their help during the paving season.
You're down to what, 18 employees?
I've got 19.
19, okay, I'm sorry. And you got, how many pipes you put in this year?
Right in 100 drainage pipes. We'll be well over 100 by the end of the year. So, we've corrected a lot of drainage problems throughout the county over the year.
Okay. And trees? I know that's been a big issue.
Yeah, we've over 300 trees this year due to the storms. We had several storms and also just dead trees that we find on the right of where whatever we've taken down and cleaned up, over 300 this year. Along with all the other maintenance. We're also working on our last round of mowing for the year. And, but we will be running our long arm mowers all throughout the winter to try to get some of the growth cut back. And we also got the parking curbs dotted out at the Tate Depot. And we'll be working down there tomorrow doing some cleaning up for Tate Days this weekend, turning the streets and everything up. So, we'll be down there tomorrow.
All right. I have to go there and make two trips because the leaves haven't started falling yet.
Yeah.
So, if you don't need a whole lot, probably get by, but if you have to go back down there later on.
Be one.
Yeah, after the storm comes through, until what we'll have on here.
Kim, I have a question. You know, if you go up Cove Road on the right, there's a tree that looks like it's sort of suspended, not in air, but it's hung onto some other trees. Did y'all notice that when you cut that other one? I think it might be on private property rather than, than air right away, but you can see it.
I could check it. Is it on, is it on the escrow portion of Cove Road or is it beyond that?
Let me think. It's beyond that. It's beyond the one y'all cut, not too long ago.
Okay. All right. I'll make another that and I'll check it.
And the person that called me about the other one called back and was so grateful with what y'all did.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
That it?
That's about it.
All right. Donnie, I'm going to roll you over to, okay there Rodney.
Our first three. We've been trying to get our feet wet, get caught up with a lot of things that were going on. We're trying to close out some of the things that Mr. Osborne had begun. We've started working on improving our equipment. We were needing to get a new scanner. The other one, the software program that it was passing away and soon would die. We're also looking at some software upgrades on our programs utilized for planning and development. We have vendors meetings scheduled over the next two or three days with a couple of the vendors that promote that stuff. We're also talking to the one that we currently use, although in the past they have been a little bit high on price. So, we're trying to get ready for the December Planning Commission meeting. It's currently, I believe it has three zoning changes that is up. And so, we'll be getting ready for that. We have been in contact with Mr. Landrum over, going over some of the things that we're trying to address and get caught up with that closeout for what Mr. Osborne had begun.
All right. Rodney, Rodney's filling in interim for that department head until we can figure out why y'all want to do about a head hunting company or do you want to use the same one that the City of Jasper uses or what? I think the one the city uses is what, about 10 grand? And I don't think I was getting crazy about that price, but...
I think they've been happy and I heard they got a really good response.
They got, I think, I heard they had about 30, 30 applications for the city manager.
Maybe we should at least bring somebody in from there.
I'd be glad to talk to them. It's a Carl Vincent Institute and I'd be glad to talk to them, but I think they charge the season around 10 grand.
Why don't you check into it? They'd be great.
Rodney, thank you. Thank you for filling in. All right. Roy, what you got, brother?
Busy, busy, busy. People liking Pickens County. Lot of coming and going and a lot of changes on properties, flash surveys, just growing every day. While Angela Reinhardt from the Providence is here, I want to thank her for taking time to find out about one of the amendments on the ballot and doing what I think was a pretty good informative article for the public on something that we were aware of. And just, just like always, just a lot of things going on, working with everybody, trying to keep everything updated.
Where are the new developments going in? I keep reading about different housing developments.
The biggest upscale housing developments, probably the premier thing that's going on is going to be over around the current hospital property, go down Jail, White Drive. I think there's approximately 70 something units in Phase One that they seem to be working real hard on right now. They're working with the City of Jasper, getting all the administrative changes that they need to get that in place. Just all over the county, lots that kind of set vacant for a while, people are starting to get them up. I guess one of the biggest examples, Village at Oak Creek, the saturation there continues. People are building, selling, becoming very active there. Just, we haven't, we haven't earned Pickens County yet and the people that are moving from other places appreciate that. And we're getting a good response.
What are the price ranges of the houses down Jail, White? Do you, have you heard anything?
I do not know the answer to that.
But single, single homes or...
From what I initially was told, it will be individually owned units, yes.
If they have, but, Roy?
Sheriff, you got a thing? Yep, I'd be glad to give you an update. We have, to where we moved into the old high school building or middle school, we've been working on that for the last several months. We finally got the Georgia Public Safety Training Center, has came in to Jasper and has taken over, kind of worked out in the upper portion of that, that school. They finished up, let's see, about five weeks ago with the first session that had about 30 students. We're in week four now of our second session and I think we've got 32 students in that class. They're also doing a lot of advanced meter media classes for law enforcement and they hope to be able to add some additional staff in after the first year and turn it more into a full-time training center, not just for mandate classes. Sheriff's Office will be moving into the middle hall of the school. We just have moved our Investigation Division over into that middle hallway and we're going to be moving our drug task force. Our Uniform Patrol will be there at that building. And then also the GBI is going to come over for a satellite office. And hopefully the Homeland Security folks is going to come over and join up with us, which will put, you know, a lot of folks working together, right there together. So, you know, we're excited about trying to finish up on some of those projects. Just kind of giving update within the office, we've got our jail, where average about 82 inmates, you know, which is a good thing for us. It'll house up to 142, but we're on average right now between 80 and 100 at any given time. The court services, some interesting numbers I was looking at recently, we scanned over 53,000 people this year coming in and out of the courthouse, which is quite high. Of those 53,000, we were able to seize nearly 460 weapons that was coming in and out of the courthouse. Anything from a pocket knife to, one lady come in, she had a set of brass smokes on her. So, you really never know where people walking in with a gun in their purse that, you know, they just forgot about. So, we're able to, you know, keep a lot of that out. 437 court sessions, 353 inmate transports, and over 4,000 civil papers has been served. Uniform Patrol, we've had, we're running about 128 calls each day. And we're on track for about 37,000 calls for services this year. And that's calls through the 911 center and generated calls that the deputies are handling out on the road. Currently there, we've got about four deputies working the road at most any time. We are running a little short handed, which, you know, we've discussed somewhat there. CID is running, our criminal investigators, a little over 500 cases for the year. One of the big things we're seeing is recently is burglaries and our thefts are starting to pick up anytime. And it happens every year around the time with the holidays approaching, Thanksgiving and Christmas. I just encourage folks to, you know, please secure your property, don't leave your cars unlocked, and, you know, write down those serial numbers. So, if you do have a burglary, then we can kind of help find that property for you. Sex offenders, we've got 44 sex offenders that we're having to monitor currently here in the county. I don't know if anybody rode by the jail last night and the jail was, parking lot was full. But each year during Halloween, we actually have all those sex offenders will come to the jail parking lot. And during the time that our kids are out trick or treating, we kind of help supervise those sex offenders all at one location. So, we don't have to worry about the kids, you know, dealing with them. Speaking of last night, it was actually pretty quiet, only we had one little incident dealing with trick or treaters setting up in a roadway, but we were able to get that taken care of. Couple of things I want to encourage folks to be careful about, we're having a lot of fraud type cases and the people are calling, a lot of the elderly folks are really being targeted about federal grand juries. Or telling them that they were, their kids had been locked up in the bail money or just a number of different things. If anybody calls and says that they need to get a green dock card or credit card, then call them back and give them the card, please don't do that. Don't, don't be a, what I call a volunteer. You know, we have enough victims out here, if you don't be a volunteer to give people your money.
We've had a, we've had a few calls up here about some. Is there anything that they can do through, of course, pressing the phone lines back isn't going to do any good, things I want to go from there, but...
We found a lot of these cases actually originating overseas, um, out of country or out of the, out of the state. It's really hard to deal with these type calls. I don't know of any of the scam calls that we've actually tracked back to anybody locally even here in Georgia. So, just again, be careful. If you've got any questions, please give us a call. We had somebody call around saying they were a deputy with the Sheriff's Office and they owed for a traffic fine and said, "If you don't pay me over the phone right now, then we're going to have you arrested." I promise you, that's, that's not coming from our office or any, you know, legitimate company. We just want to ask for that information over the phone. So, again, outside of that, I know we're working on our budget information and we'll make the file after this meeting and talk about getting those numbers back to you and finalizing that. And other than that, if anybody's looking for a good job, we're hiring at Sheriff's Office. We're about 10 or 12 down still, but we're working on filling those positions. That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming today. Phillip, you want to give us an update on the water?
Yeah, we've, right now, we've got five more meters to set. There's a couple, three come in yesterday. I think that puts us around 65 to 70 for the year. So, we're probably 25, more than we was last year. We've been working, quite a bit of work over at the shop, the old convict camp, getting it ready to hopefully move if, if everything works out, everybody down in it. Been working on our brown operation quite a bit in the last couple of weeks because I've got a checklist I have to get done before the actual brown maker and offer, salt offer gets here. I will order that as soon as concrete's being poured for our salt barn and the pads because it's about a month before, it takes about a month to get the, the unit. And I don't want to order it too early and have it here without salt because we've got to have salt for startup and calibration. And also, that's, that evening, he's going to train myself and Kim and a couple others to run the machine. So, we're just doing that. We're actually working today, getting a bill, getting ready to move a building for the brown maker itself. And I talked with Bert yesterday and he said it wouldn't be no problem to pour a pad for that building. Just let him know. And I figured we could do it all while he pours the, you know, concrete for that. But that's all we're doing. I mean, we're, that time of year, work slows down a little bit, but we still do our maintenance. We started on, we need to run over our hydrants and valves, trying to get that caught up and all our tanks and pumps are cleaned up and mowed around for the year. So, but that's about it.
While the sheriff is here giving an update, when do you plan on boarding, boarding the road for, you kind of getting a lot of water up there to the firing range?
We're going to try to do that tomorrow if the materials come in today. I'm not, you know, how UPS is. If it's not today, the locates actually did tomorrow, so if it ain't tomorrow, it will be Tuesday or Wednesday next week.
Thank you.
And then I told Wayne and Jeff that I'd get with them actually, we got a set and get them prices for the pipe from there to the shooting range. So, and if you want to cut the driveway, we can cut the driveway or, because I know they're going to pave it down the road. So, it'd just be easy just to cut it. And we're going to set it on the left side of the driveway where there's more room and then we'll just go across the driveway through the, through the woods.
Sounds good. Thank you, Phillip.
If you're under the two inch line across from there?
Yeah, we're making a two inch, we're making a two inch half. I had everything, the meter and the backflow and everything at the shop. The only thing I had to order was a valve and a couple of little brass nipples. So, I mean, I had the key pin indication and everything there that was already at the shop.
So, we have the fire hydrant already located on the other side of the road, correct?
Yeah, there's, I think there's one either right across from the shoot, the shooting range or just above it. I know there was one within 500 foot of Mr. Godfrey's that was across the road because he had called and requested a measurement.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Phillip. The, Angela, you got any grants floating around out there that we need to pull from?
Got lots of grants. They're in, they're all in really good shape right now. We're up, I think we're knocking on probably about $2.5 million in grants right now, just the, just the court system or the circuit.
All right. Paula didn't mean to overlook you. How's, how's she with resource? What are you doing?
Uh, we're, we're doing good. Just been working on open enrollment this week and we had our onsite visits on Monday and Tuesday and we had 169 confirmed. We've still got a little over 100 left to confirm their benefits. And they can do that online and if whoever don't confirm, it'll just be rolled over to what they currently have. But that's been our main focus just recently and it's about all I've got. Any questions?
All right. Any questions? Recreation Department, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Pretty busy at the red department right now. We've got basketball going on in full swing. We have around 40 teams that we've got everywhere from four and six-year-olds all the way up to 11 and 12. 347 players total comprise those 40 teams. We'll start playing games on December the 1st and we'll play till just about the end of January. I don't see us going into the 1st of February. Also at the park, we're finishing up with soccer. That should be done about the third week of this month. And then as far as outdoor sports, will be closed until spring for the most part. Of course, you know, we've got pickleball every single day at the red department, 10:00 AM to about 12:00. And sometime we have more advanced groups that play later on in the afternoon. So, but, pretty busy.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Ms. Fay, how's Finance Department doing? Running for the hills?
We just have nothing to give at this time of year. No, we're doing okay. I'm having, I gave you all a copy of the proposed budget compared to the approved 2018 budget. And these numbers for, the numbers for the Sheriff's Department are numbers that we, that we came up with after Donnie and I met on Friday. The, the overall increase in revenue is only $90,000. So, that limits us in our contingency amount for next year. The contingency that we have this year is 440,000. And next year, with the numbers as they are presented here, we'll, we'll have $47,000 in contingency. That is, that's the one thing that, that concerns me because, you know, we never know if we're going to have storms or, and how much that's going, that's going to cost. I, I think we need to have around 200,000 at least in contingency.
Do you see any, I'm sure you've looked at it, any areas that you could make that happen or is it just you've done everything?
I, I don't see anything. Hopefully the revenue, I mean, we may have additional revenue. I just, I've placed in the revenue pretty conservatively. That's, that's what I like to do. Usually we do go over in revenue, but hopefully we'll have additional revenue next year.
Any other questions with Ms. Fay? Darren, how's, how's the tax office going on back there?
Busy, of course, but what Fay just said about revenue, I think maybe we can help with that with the TAVT that we talked about the budget, the title tax. Where other counties were hitting us up on refunds where the title tax was sent to the wrong county when they're buying the vehicle. And the ladies have found about $113,000 that belongs to our county that we've sent out refund requests for. So, that's, that's a nice chunk there. And then interest and penalties on our forms of payment that we've collected is, what was it, 155,000 or anything? Which we normally wouldn't have, so that's another form of revenue we've got coming in. We collected last week, one week along, a million 200,000. And I've got a million two or $400,000 payment on my desk right now to run. Darlene's got a million dollar payment to run. How much?
Million five.
Million five. And that's it for revenue other than what's coming in normally. And we're also relocating the place for the tax sales. No longer be held from the courthouse effective December 1st. It now takes place downstairs in the Pickens Room. So, we're excited about that. And this mainly, most importantly, safety is why, because the role we live in today is we're just trying to be proactive and not become part of the statistics and everything. And thank y'all for passing that and go along with it. And then Judge Weaver also. I guess that's about it.
All right. Quick question on the TAVT. I know that thing was initiated three years ago. And the representatives at that time said when the county would come up short on the TAVT, which we knew Pickens County was going to come up short. I think we lost what, about $330,000 first year. Second year is around 468,000. And then this last year, we lost about 276. We have never received a check from the state going to make us whole on those issues that they said they would. Have you heard anything from that in the, in the future?
We, well, the, that alarm and all that's changed, but we've gotten a check from the TAVT and everything, so...
How much was that check on that? I, I know you receive a check every, you know, with the collection of the TAVT. I'm just throwing out the money that we lost from the way it was set originally to what it is now.
I'd have to look at the numbers on that. But then one of the big things is because of when people buying vehicles and everything at the dealership, they're anxious to sign that dotted line, get your permission.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good thing. I just, I just knew, I still linger in the back of my mind whether state said they'd make us whole if we come up short. We're one of the few small counties that's got three dealerships.
They're aware they have some keys in the system and they're working on that when we go to school every year. Because we're all, all the tax offices are bringing that up.
Right.
And all the little, little loopholes they have, people are slipping through and things that they didn't expect to happen. But hopefully with the new system drives coming in, that can eliminate a lot of that. But we, we're fighting with it, with the TAVT and everything, the state and that alarm and all that. But, um, one of the big things is, like I said, the other counties getting each other's revenue and we're going after it. So, like I said, we just found 113,000, we're still not finished going through.
How much are you sending out? I know you've got letters from other counties wanting money from you.
Yeah, we have, you know, you may get a request, 700 here, 2,000 there, just, but not 113,000 dollars worth. But we knew if they were requesting money from us, then someone's got our money. So, that's when we started pulling the reports and going through it.
Was it Fulton or Cobb that gave you a hard time?
Fulton County is, and it's not just us, it's statewide. But no matter what you send over, like Darlene sent a request and they sent it back, "We need your signature." She signed it, sent it back, and then they said, "Denied." So, why'd you ask for the signature if you're going to deny and you knew that from the beginning? But this, that's statewide, everybody's having a problem with it. So, when we go back to school or with the state, we'll be bringing that up. So, is there a Fulton law in the Georgia law or what are the guidelines?
I have a question for Darren. Darren, you know, in the budget meeting, you talked about needing, having access to a car.
Yes, ma'am.
And we told you to check around and so, have you come up with anything on that?
I thought, I was going to press you over to talk it over and see what happens, but I don't look around.
Did you?
The only thing, only thing we've got is that, the map they extradition we've got out here that they use, but they want one to lock in. We looked at the planning and development office. Rodney, you got any extra?
I have an extra one, if needed.
We could always bounce off and let you use Rodney's. We got one there. I mean, you don't need one all the time, just for...
We need one daily because we don't have a courier and we're taking a lot of money, revenue every day. And that's how this entire county runs, is off our deposits. So, I mean, and there's other resources that coming in, but we're one of the biggest resources for revenue for this county. And tax sales, I know y'all asked, but you have four tax sales a year? We may have four or five a year, but it may take four or five days to post each tax sale. We're constantly going out to the field doing stuff, we're constantly going to the courthouse, we're constantly going to our attorney's office. So, school, there's a lot more than just four tax sales a year.
What have you got?
He said he had...
I got one of those blazers.
Okay.
That we can have daily?
If we can work something out in, in the event that we have to hire somebody else or like you replace another truck. But we were looking at that already this year. So, I have an extra blazer though that he could use currently that would work.
It's probably, probably Richard Austin's field.
That'll work, yes. That's right. That's all we're asking for, is some form of transportation to do our job. And two is, right now, we're using our own personal vehicles which are unmarked, we're going on property to post their property for tax sale. But they're already upset they're going to lose their property. We're in an unmarked vehicle. By the time I get to their porch with a little badge, I may have a hole through it. Because I mean, they, we get guns pulling on us all the time. So, it's not fun. I mean, it's real and that's what's going on today. Thank you. Thank you, Rodney.
Yes, sir. Y'all get it worked out. I don't know if we need to, do we need to put a different sticker on that vehicle or? I don't want to flag it any different.
No, just only have the county, the county decal on it.
Yeah.
So, they know we are with the county, not just someone coming up to start trouble. Because right now, if we just pull it on our car, we're anybody's.
All right, hey? Did I miss somebody? I think we're getting all covered on that one. All right, that brings us down to item number two in the road department building. As everybody can see, the photos to my right is the old garage in the old convict camp. That's, that's the condition that we're dealing with, trying to keep it managed at this point. We would like sometime in the future to go ahead and, and replace that garage with a new garage, which means we're going to have to cut about eight feet of, of mountain down to get in there to, to put a building up there to work on our equipment. We do not have a garage for the road department and the water department per se for the equipment and the storage of equipment. So, anybody who wants to take a look at that, see what kind of, that the employees are working in, get from one day to the next. It's been pretty tough. No heat, roof leaks, we've been patch, trying to get the patch, roof patched up. But we are going to have to spend some money on getting that replaced. And so, we're now building a pole barn right now, just a pole barn, just to store our salt equipment in and try to get our, our road equipment in that's got electronics, keep it from getting wet. So, we've got that under construction right now. So, just, just a photo shoot and y'all can take a look at that. Also, we're looking at the, the convict camp building, the old marble building that's been there since, since 1920, looking at putting bathrooms in there for the, for the road department and the water department where they'd have some restrooms. The other ones are, are getting in pretty bad shape. So, we've got some, we've got some drawings to do that, hopefully this winter. Ms. Denny had had a call about putting out for bids the tires for the county. Kim has been working on that along with young gentleman sitting there next to him and trying to come up with a proposal that we could use for the local distributors of tires. tires. You guys want to put anything in on that?
Um, the way, the way it works right now, Donnie buys all the tires for the road department, water department, and all administrative vehicles here. And those tires are bought through the state contract, government contract, and we're actually getting them below cost. And, um, and I, I can't speak to Donnie in, in Sloan, but that's how, that's how it works with us right now. And I know Mark could ask about maybe if he could get him, you know, some of the tire business or whatever, but we are actually buying them through our own contract, below cost.
He told me that he had asked for public records on it and that he understands where we're buying them and how much we're paying, and that, um, he could beat those prices by about twenty dollars a tire. And I think if we just come up with, you know, asking them to include everything, like the tire, the balance and the whole package, and then, you know, if they can't beat it, I think they would understand that they've had a shot to, to try.
And I'm like, Ms. Denny, yeah, we need to be sure if we put this thing out for bids that any local bidder that wants to put a bid in on this thing, I want to know if they're going to charge you the storage costs for these cars, if the mounting and balancing for these tires, the guidelines for these tires and the specs thereof need to match what the state's requiring on, on, on the tires. I mean, I'm sure you can buy a tire from, from Japan cheaper than you can buy a Continental or a Michelin or whatever, but it's got to be, as long as it meets the specs that they're requiring for us to do, and, and we will take, take a look at that. And so, we'll start, start putting something together on that, and we'll take a look at it. But what, what brands do the, on the state plan, do they recommend that they give, you know, that's under the state plan, I guess I'm trying to say?
Continental, Michelin, Goodyear, Bev Goodrich.
And then, the reason why they do that is because of spec, spec ratio on these tires?
What it is, is the, the manufacturer, they got to be a wholesale dealer to get this state contract, and it's called a next state contract. And they sell us the tires safe for four hundred dollars a set. They sell us the tires for fifty to twenty-five dollars cheaper, and then the manufacturer, like Michelin, they reimburse the wholesaler for the sales and delivery back to get, I think it's a volume deal, how many tires they sell a year, the way that works, but that's kind of how it works with us.
Okay. Can y'all get us a, a, put these together? We need a complete total list of the tires, the sizes, and the specs of the vehicles, whether it's a motor grader or, or a Sloan's amulets or whatever, get that together. Because the only ones we deal with is county road department, the water department, and the fire department, which is the amulets and the fire trucks. Is there anything else we, we buy tires for under this contract? That's it? That covers it all, doesn't it?
I think so. Rec department.
Yeah, rec department. I'm sorry, rec department. So, you don't, how many tires you using here? Maybe a set?
About a million or so, yeah.
Yeah. But anyway, okay. Let's get all that together, and we'll, we'll try to get, get something together in December. They can take us money. I'm all in there. All in the same money. All right. Anything else on the tire purpose? All right. The, uh, we've got, got a couple items here on general discussion to the fact that the, I'm trying to find that. Rodney, you got any details on the road surveys we're having done, such as the Worthy Crossroads three-way stop for the school system, the three-way stop that, that, this engineer on Yellow Creek, as well as the closing, possible closing of the road in front of Grand D, which is in front of Salvation Army Camp? If anybody got any, you got any stuff from the engineering company that's doing that?
All right, yes, sir. I spoke with Mr. Comer yesterday that was doing the studies for us. He's gotten the numbers back to us for, in front of the Salvation Army Camp. They have acquired the numbers for the other two locations, and they're in the process of reviewing those for line of sight visibility, for speed, and they're studying the numbers, and they will pass something to us. When I talked to him yesterday, he said probably within the next week.
And Sheriff, to give you a heads up on the Worthy Crossroads deal, there's a subdivision out there, oh...
Mountain Valley.
Mountain Valley, that the school system has sent us a letter requesting that we would do a, an engineering study of putting a three-way stop there at that area. So, that's what's part of this engineering group that's charging us to do a three-way, looking at putting a three-way stop there. And of course, then that being said, you'd have to put, I'd like to, if we have to go with three-way stop, I'd like to put the caution signs like we got up at McLean Mountain that are solar panel, that way I don't have to build any electrical for that one. Any questions to those? What do you think, did he give us any time when he can get that stuff back to us?
I believe we should have something next week.
Okay. All right. Um, the Burn Mountain Trail up there at Faneego, evidently the guys are wanting to meet again. I got an email from them late last night, about six thirty, seven o'clock, somewhere there about, and want to talk about, about that on the, on the trails up there. And Mountain Constellation Trust, I think, is, is trying to get some more information from them. I hadn't, hadn't kept up my emails in the last twenty-four hours, but trying to work on that. And of course, then, we need to get with, with the road closures. We've had, uh, three, is it? Four?
Allen, Allen and Salvation Army.
Yeah.
The one that John Capel's office and the Capels have asked for. I don't know that it actually has a name, the, the, the sub-levels.
Right.
The one for the, Gerald Lyles family, and then one in the, the...
Harley Trail. And then, there's a, okay. So, we've got to, we've got to get, as soon as the surveyor gets all the details and all documentation, pardon?
On the Salvation Army.
Yeah. And waiting on engineering on that. I'd like to, the Harley Trail, there's one more I'd like to, and then, I'd like to go ahead and try to get in the process quick.
We're ready. We've got all the people.
All right. What do we have to do to go ahead and get that thing on the, on the...
Close the block. Do you want to do, you want to go ahead and do those three and then wait on the...
Yeah. I'd like to get some of this stuff out, out of the way and see what we're going to do. Well, how long does it take to run the, run the ad and...
Two weeks, four weeks.
Can you find that for sure? All right. I'd like to get that, keep that ball rolling on, on those. But if we're going to have to close Harley Trail, so be it. If we're going to have to open Harley Trail back up, so be it, but we need to do one or the other. I mean, just, just get on with it. Let's get finished up.
I have a question. I think it's Phillip that was working on the flashing light we talked about, but we didn't settle anything.
Oh, the speed limit, the speed limit, the speed detection? Yeah.
Have you gotten any further prices?
Yeah, I, uh, I've got them on my computer, and I give them during the bud's meeting. I give them to somebody to get the, uh, and where's the meeting before, you know, Jeff was asking if it had the data collection on it, and that does have the data collection on it. It's got like a month graph or daily.
It doesn't, it doesn't read the, it doesn't read the tags. It's just got...
No, it don't, it don't read the tags, but it collects the data, you know, the speeders going through, the, the average speed. There was two different sizes that I had priced. One of them was a solar. You could leave it out for months and not have to worry about it, and it was, I think, about fifteen hundred dollars more for the two. One was six thousand, one was eight thousand or seven and eight, somewhere around the math for two signs. But, but they do have the data collection. That was the biggest thing that, you know, Jeff was asking about, and when I read more into the, the quote, it had the, the data collection software.
So, would you recommend the solar?
Yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, if you, if you're going to leave it out for a month or two, the batteries, the solar, it just recharges the batteries versus having to go out and change batteries and then, you know, buying batteries if anything go bad.
Can you go ahead and give us a knockdown price, a, a definitive price on, on two of them? And I think you said what, around, around eight grand for two?
Yeah. Yeah. And he, he said the ones that's actually solar panel, it's, it takes two people to put them up, but it still don't take them like three, four minutes to put them up. It's just because of the solar.
Does the speed limit, so you've got, so you've got an area that the speed limit's twenty-five miles an hour. This thing is going to say twenty-five, but when you're driving up to it, is...
It flashes, it flashes your speed.
It flashes your speed of the vehicle.
It tells you your speed that you're, that you're going.
Okay. And it does, it does keep that on record for a month. Well, we can't, if it gets me the numbers.
I can get it off my computer right here in a few minutes.
Yeah. And let you two look at it. We can get off some money. We can, how long does it take to get them, once you order them?
Dad, I don't know. I have to call them.
Now, these are portable units, right?
Yeah, they just mount on to signpost. Like, we got signposts, it's, you know, signs that's already on site on the right of way. We can mount them on that, they just mount on signpost.
They're not on little trailer or something?
No. No, those are like thirty thousand dollars.
Mm.
The, the tow board, like thirty, thirty-five thousand.
Thank you.
But they, I mean, it's just a simple, you know...
And if you have to put in a signpost, we can drive a signpost and mount this stuff to it. All right. Give us some, give us some calls.
You got any grants or anything for something like that?
I don't think, I haven't seen any.
I, we don't have any in EMI. I mean, for that, I don't know if the sheriff might know of any grants or somebody for that type of stuff, but I don't know of any for traffic, for speed limits.
All right. Any other questions? Yeah?
Well, you know, speaking about the grants for that, um, somebody called me, I looked like, um, it was St. Alson. That's his name. He used to work with Donnie.
Krista?
Yeah. Yeah, he actually called me like, say, a week ago, and, um, he had seen where we were talking about it in an meeting, and he said that he knew how to get grants.
Well, have him contact me.